Today is Monday, July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. It's six o'clock PM. I'd like to follow the regular village board meeting order. We didn't stand for the pledge of allegiance. Public comment on the agenda items?
Been on the agenda, but I was told I have a few minutes. Some friends of mine and people from the village in the township have been.
If you just state your name and your address.
Nancy Van Ness, seven thirty-three, one ninetieth Avenue. In Somerset. So we were thinking that would be nice to have a museum. There's been interest in preserving the village and the township's history and such. We've been looking at the old town hall. We're gonna walk through. Yeah, Jockner from the township was there with us. She doesn't seem to think there's a problem other than setbacks and issues that the village would have. So we're just pursuing this and that we meet and see if, you know, we can feel the possibility. I think we're looking at something very small. The building is not heated, so we were thinking of maybe just being open in the summer and maybe two days a week, couple hours. So it's very limited, but when we travel down south, they have little kind of hometown museums and they're open just a few hours a week. They're not, and there's never a crowd in them. They're really kind of quiet places. So that's what we're thinking. We don't have water into the building. There's a tank out in the back that uses to water flowers, so we'd have to look at how the village can get water in there, and we need a restroom. So I think it means that we're going to have to add an addition. So that's where we're at. That's when my other friend, we're going to come tonight, but they're not here, so. I did a little drawing, but it's different pencil. I don't know if you'll be able to see much of it. But that that village is, that building is thirty-eight feet long, north and south, and sixteen feet across by east and west. It's it's kind of, I'm not sure if the building is tilted or if the lot is is not. It's not square for sure. So there's kind of a bump out in the back made of concrete. And so we're thinking if we continue with something that would kind of wrap around that back corner for an addition, and we would hope to have the restroom there, maybe a little workroom of some kind, maybe something with a sink and where we could make coffee and Kool-Aid and that type of thing. So we're not, we're hoping to keep it minimally expensive, so. So does that sound like a possibility in the village? And I'm not sure because that lot is owned by the township, and so it's a building. How does that, do we do something that's a joint? I mentioned that to Ed, and he didn't, he didn't say no, so I don't know.
We can't really discuss too much in all the comment, but I think we'd be willing to work with you guys.
Yeah, well, we're gonna meet with the township on Wednesday night this week, and the same thing, it's just all preliminary, just trying to get a feel for if that's something people want. How can we do it? So certainly ADA accessibility is a big thing because that little entrance where you have to climb up through rocks and old steps is not gonna work, so we'd have to put the better entrance in that addition, I believe. And then I think it would necessitate some kind of a ramp, maybe winding around that little hillside to get up. So there are lots of that, working with us, kind of has that in mind. So that's where we're at right now. I have nothing more, really. But I appreciate the chance to talk to you and let us know your thinking of it.
The thirty-first.
So perfect topic for that.
Okay, yeah, I'll remember that.
Thank you so much, Nancy.
If we can be on the agenda for that, is that?
Nancy was on the board from ninety-eight to two thousand and seven. Thanks again, Nancy.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else for public comment?
Hi, I'm Kathy Ness. I work five-three Charles Lane here in Somerset. I know that we're on the agenda for a little later, the champions are, but I did want to address the topic that's on the agenda tonight of the village emblem and flags for Main Street. That's how it's put on the agenda. So I would like to remind the board that the champions, as a result of our CAT project that we did, came in October. We presented to the board our recommendations. At that time, our recommendations were to use the existing logo that we already have, that we paid adding advantage ten thousand dollars for in an effort to be good stewards of our taxpayers' money. And we really had the bigger problem with the tagline. The tagline was beautiful, inviting, just across the river. We felt like that was a little insulting, like almost the only thing we had going for us was our proximity to Minnesota. And it didn't really represent us as a community and the type of community that we are. So we, at that time, offered to help with this project. We were directed to work with the, one of the community, Public Works, I believe. Then there was a contest on Facebook for a new logo. Mike had emailed us and asked us if we wanted to submit a logo for the contest. We emailed back with questions. We didn't get an answer on that, so I wrote a letter to the whole board in January. I resent it again in April, just to make sure that Ryan would have that as well. So I just want to make sure that that is still at the forefront because there were some critical questions and thoughts in there that we think need to be considered. We have a list of over a hundred taglines. I think we used AI to generate them that we could choose from. We offered to facilitate community feedback focus groups to get community input. More than anything, we asked that before we do this, before we make a decision to change the logo or not change the logo, that we have a decent plan in place to transition the logo fully. As we discussed, we had, we've got three logos in play right now because we paid the money for the new logo. We never transitioned and and it looks sloppy. It's just sloppy and unprofessional, and it doesn't represent our community well. So whatever we decide, we would like to do a timeline, a project plan, a budget. We estimate about thirty thousand dollars to rebrand a village of our size with, that's without repainting a water tower. So we'd like to make sure that all of that gets considered with whatever you decide, however you decide to move forward. But again, that tagline, we think, is important. We noticed on the new website, the tagline's been dropped altogether, and now we're just using the logo. So just something to think about there. And then with regards to the flags, one of our champions is looking at a program. It's called Hometown Heroes, and it's a program where you can have veterans from your town on each flag. We were thinking that if we did that, we could maybe partner with the Legion or local BFWs and then have family sponsor flags, and they would have the veterans' picture on them, their branch of service, if they're, you know, whatever, we can decide what that is. Put them up around Memorial Day, don't cringe, Bob, but then leave them up through P-Suit Days so that when families come into town, they can see their flags, and then take them down, put up our regular flags, and then put them back up the month of October for Veterans Day. So that's something that we're interested in doing. If you are interested in that, the champions would like to pursue that. There's a lot of avenues for funding that we can explore, so it wouldn't really cost the village anything. We'd just like to do those flags. Thank you.
And for tonight's thing was just putting like, fixing up this wall and getting like the state flag and the flag kind of back on this wall.
Okay.
Anybody else for public comment?
It's not on the agenda either, but it's pretty pretty.
Name and address?
Yeah, my name's Brady Penfield, and I'm, address is six-one-seven South Main Street in River Falls. So, yeah, my name's Brady. I go to UW River Falls. I'm one of my senior there, but I'm also a local candidate for State Assembly. So for those who are aware, this is, Somerset's in the twentieth Assembly District, which is most of St. Craig County. So the purpose of me being here, and then also I'm one of the.
It's a new twenty-eighth district, just so I understand. Our district has been redesigned, so it doesn't go north enough. It goes south.
Yep, so most, almost entirely St. Craig County. There's currently no incumbent either because of the way it was drawn, so it's a completely new district, but I'm one of the, I'm one of the Republican candidates, and the purpose of me being here is that I've been going around to all of the the school board, town board, village board, city council, and county board meetings across the district. This district goes into Pierce County and Dunn County to really get a good picture on issues endemic to specific communities. So as I go these meetings, I try and bring one or two issues with me, should I win my race and go to Madison, so I have a really good pulse on on issues per community, so I can really represent it, you know, as as good as possible because there's a lot of representatives that may neglect certain communities, span their size within their district, and I'd like to see that, you know, continuity across. But yes, that's my purpose of being here. Once again, my name is Brady Penfield. The election's on August thirteenth, so it's about a month out. And then if it's already the board, I do have literature, if I could just hand it out to you guys, to the public, as long as with your approval.
Yeah, I think that's okay. Thank you, Brady. Anybody else for public comment? Approval of consent agenda?
Approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Right, for a second, for the discussion, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the consent agenda. First and second, ready, go, second. First and second, further discussion, all in favor?
Hi.
Discussion possible approval authorizing elders to update two thousand and sixteen village management plan. Last, last month, we were talking generally about, and then with the building studies that are coming to completion. Traditionally, what the village has done is work with elders then to position where those could be funded over the next period of ten years and plug those in to see where the when bonds would need to be taken out, when they would need to be taken out, or, you know, different scenarios of funding, proposals in the packet, explaining what they would do, and it would be, you know, probably over the next six months, nine months of work to work with us as a board and work with staff as well. They lay out the steps on the last part of the packet. So what are we getting for? Well, our financial management plan, like how we decide to, when we decide to fund projects or no fund projects, so we're not just willy-nilly taking out a bond here and then don't have, don't know what that impacts in future years. But because right now. That's just one aspect. Yeah, yeah. But I mean, right now, we're positioned fairly, pretty well in most of our, in most of our debt, I would say, right? Because we don't have a whole lot of debt out there. We don't have a lot of bonds, I would say comparatively to the area. We're sitting pretty good. I guess, what are the other, what else are we getting for it, I guess, is just it's long-term planning? Above and beyond what we need to do already because we kind of. Instead of having like. Do we have a financial, do we have a plan to power and fund each of those projects? Do we have a plan when the projects are gonna happen? In particular, are all projects, or do you mean like the? Some of the ones, kind of whatever's gonna come out of the study, other ones that are on long-term maintenance plans, short-term plans, complement, capital project plans. So we would have to contract them no matter what, but doing this upfront cost would would save us money in the long run? Well, yeah, you're not gonna be doing it willy-nilly, and then when you do engage elders for those projects, it's directly for taking out bonds. Because we already pay them. Otherwise, you're gonna really repeat this process every time you take out a bond.
Well, on an annual basis, don't we, on an annual basis, already kind of sit down and meet with elders and kind of review that and bring all the trustees up to, up to speed on that and decide whether or not what we're gonna do before we go through our budgeting process?
But I think that's on an annual basis, looking long-term, ten years out, funding all those projects.
Right. Sorry, Ryan, but I don't mean to interrupt you, but already we, we meet on an annual basis as as a board with elders and review what we're doing, and this is kind of what we're looking at here. Are we getting some kind of like a fixed cost rate for? I see in the contract, it says two eighty-five an hour. Is that going to be for for ten years at that rate, you know, for actual hours at the cost, final cost may be less?
All I can say is that's what is proposed, that it would not, the project would not exceed a certain amount, and it's at an hourly rate, so it may be less than that. So it's not too, yeah.
So is this ten, this ten-year plan up for, up for renewal? Is that, is that what we're looking at here? So this was done in two thousand and fourteen?
Sixteen, so I mean, we're approaching the end of life on that. Is this something that?
Is there a chance that we could see the old one?
That's here, sure. I mean, this is what I would have thought you'd be working off of, but apparently you're not familiar with it then. No, this is.
Well, you said twenty sixteen. I've never seen this until now.
I wasn't really, I guess I was never really familiar with whatever agreement we have with elders. I figured it was a project-by-project basis that we were engaging them on. And I guess my question would be if we're not gonna be engaging them on a project-by-project basis based on the fact that we have a lot of stuff upcoming. That's why we would engage them and do this. I would think that this would give us a cost savings or if. That's the idea, the idea is to save, save costs also, so you're not just taking out a bond this year and not realizing the impacts, just for that immediately in that budget cycle. But also strategic, the plan, when you're gonna do all those projects. I think they kind of already, it seems like they do a pretty good job of breaking that down every time you look at a project of going over the old of what we have in bonding already. They're taking, yeah, but they're gonna take your new study that isn't completed. We don't know if projects are in there. They, what they've been doing is working on the products you brought forward so far. So this would be continuing that, so that's through the plan, guide the process. It's, that's what it is. So this would be marrying up with. It's also, it's also the financial management policies, like, you know, what our general fund balance is, review that on a regular basis, review you know, strict capital, usually all the different tools, all utilities, everything, all in a comprehensive review. And is that something that, like, right now, that's something we're doing right now? That's something, say, we have Andrea and Bob are working on, or it's kind of like a a hodgepodge of people who are working on it because it's. Andrea and Bob are probably involved, MSA would be involved, and we as a board would be involved. So who's doing it now, I guess is a great question. Like, we're just willy-nilly doing it. They're following the existing plan, and then, you know, when new projects come forward, the board makes a decision on that. That's, that's what I assume is going on, given the fact that no one is familiar with this. Did they bring this to us, or is this something you have put on the agenda? I did, yeah. Because we talked, we talked about it last month in one of the meetings. I think I'd like to hear kind of the old plan and everything you all have to spend. Three thousand plus dollars. Have something, so the goal would be to have something in place by end of the year. And realistically, this is kind of just a forecast of what, we don't know what the MSA plan of the different building sites is gonna look like completed yet. So this is just kind of to start the conversation. Yeah, that's, my question, yeah, it's just like, it seems like it's a service they already provide already, so we might have to we discuss this a little bit further, just so I can understand. I'm not really understanding clearly what we're getting for the money. If they did a tender plan before, doesn't that bring us out to twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-four?
I'd really like to see the, the previous, you know, the one that we're currently operating under, if there is one, and compare it with the one that they got right now to see what the changes are.
Yeah, I mean, I like the idea, though. Obviously, yeah, we got a financial management looking out. I think it's a great idea.
So this is more of an overview, long-term strategy?
Not just a single year-by-year look.
So I'd like to compare those two, huh? So what if we do project by project, or if we do this overall? So, yeah, definitely, we need to look at the old one because we'll have to update it in twenty twenty-six or so anyway.
Do you know how Fender, average annual spend without others?
I do not.
A lot of it gets incorporated into the bond we take out. All that's like part of the. Yeah. Makes sense. Is everybody okay with tabling this till next month? Let me get the whole plan, right? I'll make a motion to table to the August meeting. Second, first and second, in further discussion, all in favor? Hi. Discussion possible approval of buckthorn and underbrush clearing in Village Park. So it's came forward. There's some discussions. We're really looking to clean up Village Park. Part of, of some of our discussions on the public works meetings has been to really start pushing to clean up the park and hopefully one day get a referendum to put, get something going down there. As part of that, we would like to start by clearing out some of the buckthorn. Now, I don't have the. So the quotes that I, the quote, so Bob and I worked on this together, and the quote that I obtained was for the goats to get this area here. But it actually stopped, so it won't go all the way up there. It only goes up to the stairs, not all the way actually up to the bridge. Some of that is, so it's rock face. It's really, yep, there you go. So we're looking at. So we're looking at. So we'd like to remove all of this eventually. But the quote I got for the goats is only gonna be for this area right here, just up past the the new set of stairs where that fence goes. And there's, the reason we want to get goat stairs because it's kind, a lot of that's all rocky face and stuff like that, so it's pretty hard to get anything mechanical in there. So that's the one thousand and some quote for that. And I think the other part of this quote would be for us to remove the rest of it mechanically. Is that right, Bob?
Correct.
Because we could get in there mechanically with the rest of it, but it's really tough to get in there, and then there is some cliff face in there that once you get past that buckthorn, it's really pretty in there, and then another part of it is the goats were a hit up at La Grange. We had a lot of people that were going up and seeing the goats just to go up and see them. It drew people into the parks. So we'd be hoping to do that same thing here, bring people down to Village Park, clear it out so people can see down into the river and really get people fired up about our, one of our great resources in our village park and trying to get it cleared out and hopefully get a referendum started. So that was kind of the idea behind it. I believe there's still enough on the budget within the park's budget to at least do the one thousand, or we can reallocate some of the dog park money to that for the, the small section for the goats, and then I'm not sure. I think we could cover the rest of it mechanically.
Out there.
Out there for that. Thirteen hundred for the goats and then another forty-two hundred basically for the mechanical removal? Yes.
What is the significance of the red on that photo?
Hopefully next year, that's next year's goal. And, yeah, if anyone's been up to La Grange, you can definitely see that it, you can see almost all the way through the parking lot. I've got, I've got pictures. I'm working on putting together a presentation for that, and just, you can see one side, it's totally clear. All gone on the other side, it's just completely overgrown. And I will say that the bugs and mosquitoes and flies and everything, the areas where the goats actually ate are are much better. So it does help, it does help with that. Obviously, we will have to go back and be treated. Yeah, so that was, that was kind of our thoughts.
I moved to approve the thirteen hundred dollar one-time and see how how that progresses and and review it at committee level next, next year on, and possibly during budget time.
First and second, any further discussion, all in favor? Hi. So, so do we want, are you only want to do that one, Donnie? Or your move, if you don't want to do the mechanical, was that, or do you want to treat them separately?
We're gonna look at reviewing it at budget time is what I was, you know, we'll approve the the thirteen hundred this fall, and we'll look at establishing such for budgeting at the budget meeting this fall for next year.
Discussion of impact fee needs study?
In Chuck's absence, I'll attempt this one. Yeah, the impact needs assessment. We're almost done with that water storage need study, so that'll depict a lot of this for, for impact fees. That, that report's ready. It'll go to Public Works next month.
If the report is ready, can it be given to the board and we can just review it?
Donnie, so I think he's fine tuning a few things. We just had a discussion on Friday, so he was putting some other details in there, so I should have this, and I'll pass it along to you.
Because we were hoping that it was going to be, you know, here for discussion here in July.
Yep. And that was all relevant to the water study, which we didn't have a Puma Works meeting, so we would have discussed it.
So this would be to gather the data to support any impact fees for?
Future collection.
Okay, not just in the area of water, but other, all the parts of the full impact, right?
Okay, so next month, the impact fees are going to be established then, and are we going to be looking to vote on them as an agenda item, and this is gonna be worked through, or is this gonna be continued to be kicked down the road?
From what he told me, it'd be, it'd be ready.
That's, that's for the water aspect of it, but all the other, the other areas of of the impact fees as well?
Correct. We'll be ready.
So everything will be ready for brought to the board next month for a review and possibly adopt? And I think there's a process to that if I, if I'm I, I don't know exactly the whole process on it. If you could enlighten me on how that, how that works a little bit, does that go through several meetings before the impact? Because it was done in two thousand, last time it was done is two thousand and twelve.
Yeah, I'm not certain on the process. I know, as we noted, there was special notice in the past, that's all.
Yeah, to have your needs assessment report completed, it has to be available for the public, and I think there's a thirty-day waiting period in a public hearing to reestablish.
I think the commission has to weigh in on it as well. Any further discussion? Discussion village lot use?
I don't have anything in your packet. This was, Donnie, you had asked for this to go on the agenda.
I did. The reason I was asking that is I noticed that when I was reviewing the budget numbers that there's nothing really coming in for the, the lease agreement that we had. There was no income coming in on that. I don't know where that was at. We didn't have a finance meeting, so I figured the full board could at least. There was no income coming in on that. I don't know where that was at. We didn't have a finance meeting, so I figured the full board could at least have a discussion about it. As we noticed, there's been, you know, several, you know. People setting up at the uh, at the uh, you know, the corner lot over here. Uh, on the weekends and that's all fine, uh, but I don't see uh, um, you know, I, I thought we had to have a, a. I believe the board approved that if anybody was going to be doing that, that they would have to rent the spot.
Let me just speak to her enough, please. Um, so the current lease agreement that we have in place with. Um, the vendor that is there. Um, I know Andrew has sent out invoices. Um, we just have not received anything as far as payment goes. Um, the other vendor that has been popping up there, they had a direct seller's permit that was approved back in, I believe. Uh, March time. I don't know the exact date. Um, so prior to the board. Uh, deciding that a lease agreement wanted to be in place for future um, vendors. And so we don't, staff here, we don't have anything as far as uh, lease agreement or. Um, anything to give these vendors when they come in and want to rent a spot. So. I made the decision that they already had their direct seller's permit in place. Um, and that it was an approved direct seller's permit. So they've been there um, on the use of the direct seller's permit. Um, so staff.
What is, what does a direct seller's permit cost?
Direct seller's permit, I believe is thirty-three dollars. That also includes a background check.
And does it also include and verify that they uh, have their health and safety uh, um, you know, uh, through the county, correct?
So we don't do anything with that piece of it. Um, I'm not sure.
Give them a permit though unless they have that, unless they're approved to, to uh, vendor food the, through the county.
Yes, um, my understanding is that we haven't handled that. That's at the county. Um. I don't know if prior process has been them, has been staff here collecting that. Um, I haven't seen it. Um, I know for pea soup days that the Lions Club handled that. Um, as far as getting it verified through the county. So we can certainly update our forms to gather that information so that we have it housed here as well. Um, we just don't have a process and we would like some direction as staff on a process. One of the ideas that Andrew and I threw around. Versus the lease agreement, because that doesn't seem to be working out in our favor right now with our current lease agreement in place as far as collecting. A fee would be to maybe consider upping the direct seller's fee. To kind of generate some of that income that we would normally do from a lease agreement, um, without having to kind of place down. That because they come and they pay for the direct seller's permit fee when they apply for it.
Could be required a s- a special direct seller's permit just for that area and then the general.
Are you getting a copy of their insurance with the village as a name insurance?
No. Right now, the direct seller's process is an application. They fill out with their. Name, um, their business name, where they want to be kind of set up for sometimes it's, oh, we want to be here at the village lot. Sometimes we're gonna be down. Um, in front of the old treadmill or wherever, um, and kind of the nature of the business that they'll be doing. And then we give that application to, they pay their fee, then we give that application to the police department to run a background check. We get it back from them, approved, not approved, and then we issue the direct seller's permit. That's been the process that's been in place.
And then they also, if they were selling food though, you'd need a copy of their approved uh, uh, health um, from the county as well.
We have not been collecting that piece of it. That's been handled at the county.
Right, but, but, but if, how do we know the co- they, they have that? That from the county if we don't have it in our file, no different than uh, you know, like uh, insurance or anything like that. If they're, if they're. They're doing business on village property.
I don't disagree. It's just not our process right now, but I don't disagree with what you're saying.
It's not on the application, Donnie, as a. Or whatever it is. So it sounds like we need to review the application and the fee. And I, and I think it's two different things. I feel it's the direct sellers. Permit is one thing and then use of the village lot is two separate things.
I think yes. Where, I think we would as staff like some direction though is. If the use of the village lot is going to be different, how do we want that to look? Because right now. Even with the lease agreement that we have in place, we're not successful in collecting that. And rather than with our limited staff here trying to chase that down. Would the board consider collecting it upfront as a direct seller's permit, maybe the fee for that increases? And then that covers the use of this village lot. And if they wanted to go down to Village Park or any other village property.
So you're saying our current, our current person that we approved a lease agreement with, which we have a signed lease agreement with. Uh, is not uh, um, um, abiding to the terms of the lease agreement?
We have not collected any of the fees since that was put in place.
So they're not abiding to the terms of the lease agreement?
Correct.
More committee should discuss and I think we can put it back to finance next month's finance and personnel. And we do have a blanket uh, lease agreement for other people and then address, address our current lease holders not fulfilling the contract.
Or do we even let, do we even entertain the fact of allowing uh? You know, business to be performed on, on the village property unless uh, unless they're uh. They own it, they can purchase it.
You drafted up a lease. Yeah, there's a lease for the, the coffee shop and that was intended more for a, a longer term. Um, then I think some of these vendors that are there for a weekend or whatever. And I guess and for those. You know, you would have your seller's permit. And then we could come up with a simple license agreement to allow them to stay at that spot. For next number of days and they would pay an upfront fee. For that, so we don't have collection problems. Staff's got enough to move without trying to track these people down and. For the coffee people, you know, they agreed to that rent amount. Um, they suggested it and. I have no idea why they're not paying. I hadn't heard of that before.
I think that's an issue that we, that we talked about separately, but, but I agree means we resolve. But I, I kind of like you said, so you see it kind of the seller's permit being a all in one process, but. You know, if they're gonna use that, it would be a, they'd have to pay additional fee for the, the use of. This village lot.
Yeah, and because it, it could.
Or other village lots.
Yeah, depending on the lot, depending on whether it's part of a, you know, a celebration or something, you may not charge them to be part of pea soup place. Then if they're just on, you're a day camp. What, what the board agreed to and approved is a hundred and fifty dollars per.
Month.
Per month. During space. It's no public comment. You know, maybe it's something to look at for sure.
I, I, I think uh, we need to, you know, I agree, we need to look at, you know, two things there. We were trying to, um, you know. You, one spur up economic development and, and uh, in the, in that corner lot that we, you know. We, that we purchased and we redid and we were trying to get something going there, but. I think also is a very important thing that we need to look at is the transient merchant. Uh, people coming into town and, and buying a license uh, to sell things. If they, if they are selling and vending food, we should at least uh, have the, the information on hand in case. Somebody would get sick or something like that, uh, that we could be able to, to find out who they are and track down what. You know, you know, what, what's going on to, to ensure that uh, the community is, is at least being safe and, and you know. Um, especially when it comes to, you know, food.
Since that's a discussion item, are you guys fine with putting it back to uh, personnel and finance for next month?
Which means, yeah.
Make a motion to address this at Personnel and Finance for August.
Pretty rough second.
First and second for the discussion on favor?
Hi.
Hi. Opposed. Uh, discussion possible, global, regular half as always.
Yep, um, I, this is kind of a follow-up from. April, when we discussed changing the summer office hours um, to open at eight AM. That has been. Very helpful in staff's opinion. We help a lot of folks between the hours of eight and nine. Um, so we would like to keep that going. Uh, we don't feel like there's been a negative impact closing up shop at four. Um, so again, we'd like to keep those office hours. But then picking back up um, with our half day opens on Friday as we were during kind of the normal school year time. Um, so staff would just like to have the board consider that.
I don't see necessarily a problem. The only issue I have is making sure that we're open on the days that are, you know, like when certain things are required to be.
Oh, yeah.
You know what I mean? I just want to make sure that's covered because.
I'm, I'm concerned about, um, you know, we get lead up to the election this year. Um, you know, that the, that the office is open uh, enough for individuals who wanted to come in and cast up, you know, their ballots.
And we do stay open on the days and that's been past practice regardless of this. On the days that are required by statute for us to be open until five PM to accept ballots. Um. So that hasn't been an issue and we'll, we'll continue to do that and maintain that statute for a requirement.
I think that's what I think if, if this was a, that was. We don't all understand that. It just for the future, you know, when we review this, if we ever do it, that, that, that's specified out. Is that just? Make sure that's gonna happen.
Right.
So we're not losing any hours. We're just changing them a little bit.
Correct.
Brand and chroming a motion to approve the regular, the change in the regular office hours with um, just that one caveat that make sure we do everything that we have to for our election, so.
Second.
First and second, any further discussion?
I think uh, the only discussion I have on that is uh, you know, is that, is that through the end of this year? Or is that uh, you know, until we as a board decide that there might be a need uh, for um, you know, re- reevaluating it?
I would say it's until summer unless we, unless the staff would bring something forward or if someone from the citizenry. It becomes an issue.
So this is, this is going on until, until it gets brought up again then, correct?
Those summer hours.
Okay. Well, summer hours, summer hours are different than it, right?
Yeah.
Summer hours are already in. We're talking about after summer.
When summer completes, this would be the schedule. And then when summer starts again, we'd have, we'd review this. It's, I think it's a good, this safety valve to review it.
This proposal, Donnie, is from September first to May thirty first.
Correct. Okay, so it's. It's, it's starting on September. I just wanted to know if we were, if, if it was in, until it, it gets brought up again, that's all.
On favor?
I.
Opposed. Discussion one year update with video from Somerset Champions. Girls.
Hello.
Champions.
Um, thank you for putting us on the agenda first of all. Um, I'd like. You already heard Kathy speak, but this is Kathy Hansen. I'm Kim Dunleavy and we're with the Somerset Champions Council. And we're really excited that we're celebrating our one year anniversary. This is uh, very exciting for us. We're here to give a presentation. We have a video um, to, for everybody to watch. And we plan to bring this video and do a presentation at other local government um. Meetings in the area, school board, town and service organizations. So that we can share this information um, to bring awareness of the things that we have accomplished so far. And the ideas that we're thinking about for the future. Uh, really, I, I would like you to note and I would like to highlight the number of people who have participated. And the number of people who have stepped up to lead these projects. Uh, I have heard over the years, many people say, you know, the same people show up. When it's volunteer time, it's always the same handful. That's not what we're seeing with the Somerset Champions. We're seeing a wide variety of people. That um, obviously have passion for some of the projects that we have put forth. And so they step up. And they've done all the hard work of organizing and phone calls and planning to put it together. And then there's the people that show up and actually help make the project happen. So it's been thrilling to see the number of people. Um, who are Somerset's champions. So here's our video. We need any of the lights to turn off.
Let's see, hold on one second if that will.
Nice, that voice, that's Becca Whitlock. I gave Becca some, some talking points, some slides and some pictures, and she did the best, so really need to give her a lot of credit, she's an amazing resource for our community, and I know I've said that to you before, but super thankful to her, couple things you saw in the video that we are an official five oh one C three nonprofit. Um, a lot of work went into that, Kim did let that work, um, wrote our bylaws, got our articles of incorporation, got all the things done that, that need to be done, it's not an easy process, so we recognized pretty early on that we needed some money, that we needed the ability to raise our own money, because we just can't keep going to the same wells every time we need money for projects, and so this is going to allow us to go after some big grants. And so we're working on that right now, we've got a list of grants nationwide, Wisconsin, and we'll be looking at, um, lo- aligning that up with our priority project list, and then figuring out how we get funding for all of those, um. Uh, we also just recently joined the Chamber of Commerce, uh, we partnered with the Chamber, we've partnered with them a couple of times, and we felt like that, um, it was our responsible thing to do to support the Chamber, so that, um, we, part of our cap, um, initiative was to have better partnerships with community organizations, with the village, the township, and so that supports that initiative, um. So, uh, some upcoming things we have going, uh, August sixth, we have National Night Out, we're gonna be doing a cupcake walk, tattoos and face painting for kids, just a great way to get out and support our local law enforcement, uh, we'll have our annual river cleanup again on August tenth. Um, Katie Byblos and Lowell Peterson will be leading that again, and, um, they did a great job last year, super successful. Uh, the Lions have asked us to partner with their haunted hayride this year, um, they do that every other year. We're actually going to, um, do some learning this year, and hopefully, one of our initiatives was to have like, um, a fall event to bring the community get together, we recognize we can't just keep bringing the community together to do work. So this would, um, be a nice community celebration between P-Soup Days and, and Light the Night. Um, so we'll be working on that, and then we're partnering with the Chamber again, um, on Light the Night, and potentially maybe even taking over that project from them. Um, and maybe, and we're, we're, we're still in the, the discussion phases, but that's what we, so we're gonna keep those things going while we're, are looking for funding and trying to expand what we're, what we're doing.
Thank you guys.
Then any questions, are there any ideas that you thought you might have seen in the video but weren't there, or ideas, um, potential future projects?
Only thing that came to my head was, uh, Nancy up here talking, is just keep an eye out as you're looking through any grants for anything that would picks up any old historical buildings and give you pair with the township.
I love that, I was thinking that as she was talking, like, how could we support this, right?
That'd be a good idea, that was, that was it, you guys have done a great job, I know I've been, I helped out some of the stuff and had a lot of fun, and, um, you guys have done great.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for your wonderful work.
Yep. Discussion possible, dual authorizing paid leave for village president. I'm not, I didn't ask for this to be put on there, and I'm not, uh, not asking you to, to have a leave of absence, so.
So I put this on the agenda along with, uh, author, uh, the next item, request village president to take voluntary paid leave of absence. So it was my intention to publicly state that, um, my recommendation is that, that you would take a paid leave of absence until the conclusion of your current legal situation.
And I will not be doing that unless, uh, unless there's a village recall.
Um, so this is an opportunity for any other board member to make that same recommendation.
Yeah, I would be in the same boat as Caleb, and Mike, you know, you and I have had our differences. Um, I do believe you are due your day in court, but this makes it really hard for not only us, but the village staff, just do business. I can't speak for everyone else, but only for myself, but this is the only thing I'm asked about everywhere I go. Um, so the request would be that we would authorize your pay, we're not saying any guilt or anything, what we do, just ask you, for the good of the village, to consider taking paid. I've already stated my intention. Anything further? Nothing big action, I bet. Discussion possible, approval ordinance thirteen dash one dash one four zero.
So, uh, let me take, take this note, please, um, so in our ordinances, we have two sections that address accessory buildings, which would include garages that are detached in nature, um, primarily the size. Uh, we have one section of our ordinance that says four hundred, and another that says nine hundred. The plan commission did come back and recommend the nine hundred square feet, um, and that is highlighted in, uh, your packet, or at least should be. Um, it should read that accessory use and the structure is placed in the rear yard of any district shall not occupy more than twenty percent of the year, rear yard, or shall not exceed nine hundred square feet, whichever is more restricted. We, I think those are broken up too.
Yeah.
Hey Bob, uh, where does it state in, uh, uh, in the ordinance about the other spot that says at nine hundred square feet that they, that it would be consistent with?
Uh, it's the next ordinance, I believe.
Or was that in the thirteen one forty-two?
Thirteen one forty-two. Thirteen one forty-two.
One forty-two? Yeah.
Yeah, which isn't included.
Should they, should we reference each other's section after, if, you know, after five, four, port D, and
Okay.
I'm just saying, should, should it be, would that make it easier for when there comes up question left on this here, but it says this here?
I agree with, I agree with Ryan's, uh, Ryan there.
So if it's in terms of the garages, detached, detached. So, I guess, a couple things, one, if we're gonna change anything in the zoning code, we need a public hearing, ask to notice, we gotta go through that process. And then, you know, when you, we're talking about sub four here, when you get to sub five, that specific, five and six talks about garages and half-garages, and says that they're supposed to comply with the dimensional requirements in the zoning district, and I don't know if there's other standards in those individual zoning districts that may conflict with this nine hundred square.
Yeah, that's what was happening, was it was conflicted.
Yeah, so there may need to be more changes to make sure it's consistent throughout.
Okay. Should we send this back to Paul for, for the review and bring it back to next month? Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Make a motion to forward ordinance one three one four zero and ordinance one five one four to village attorney for review. Wait, hold on a second. Not a first and a second, any further discussion?
Just the discussion of, uh, the recommendations that Ryan had mentioned about, uh, any, any changes really should, if there, if there's other areas that it cited, that it should reference those other areas, so we don't, if we, if future boards or whoever makes changes, they, they will know, note to go to those other areas and make the changes there as well to be consistent.
Any further discussion, all in favor?
I.
I, I propose same sign.
Who was the second on that?
Brandon. Brandon.
It was Caleb.
I'll give it to you.
Uh, discussion possible, approval, village seal and place. We have one. Where, where was Andrea out, was that, you know?
I've not gotten an update.
Brain-cruising motion table, go next meeting.
Very.
Further discussion, all in favor? Discussion possible, approval, update of land over complaints in River Hills, Aspen Drive range.
Uh, so the village engineer, um, primarily the, um, um, stormwater engineer and the developers engineer have now been working through a revised plan. Um, there was some vacation time taken, um, by both engineers, so, um, I did speak with MSN today, and, uh, they do, uh, expect some, uh, response this week as well, so. Um, but obviously, we've had some additional issues pop up here.
Some more, her emailed me this eve, this afternoon for three forty-four Aspen Drive, and then she shows a picture of all of her neighbors that are above river in their backyard. Well, at least there's progress, it may not be happening as people want, but.
Slow, and it's, um, it's, it's just getting very frustrating. I'm frustrated, the homeowners are more frustrated, but, um, it's just something that could have been avoided through design, and it should have.
And I just forwarded it to Bob at the beginning of the meeting, uploading the pages, if you can send them onto the rest of the board. Oh, I did, it's not on Aspen Drive, but related, I did see that they were working on my neighbor's yards on, uh, Friday on Walnut, right before the big rainstorm came in, but they are working on those lots on Walnut to finish the yards.
And just for other piece of information, the work has started out in, uh, White's, so that, all their wall is going up. Uh, some of that cleanup, topsoil, and additional work is, is being addressed.
Do we get any signs, do we get any signs up, uh, uh, speed signs and, and, uh, and stuff like that?
Once the grading's completed, then they'll put signs up.
They thinking that's gonna be this month yet, before school starts?
I don't know, as quickly as possible, I mean, Ryan's been messing things up for contractors almost on a weekly basis, so.
Sure.
I, I really hope so, Donnie, to answer your question, because it'd be nice to close that project out.
Right, we're just trying to get some temp signs or something up for, for the residents there.
Yeah.
Has there been a guideline given for winds out, for the correction, for the topsoil and the boulders and?
Just as quickly as the contract can do it, since we've taken over the contract, we're just, as quick as we can get stuff going here.
You can't really get equipment in many places, I imagine.
Well, it's the pond that's slow and dumb, because we.
Close session, convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point five, parent one, parent E, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session for capital investments group, second. Two, kind of roll, uh, first and second, whole call vote, Brian, Brian, secret.
Caleb, Darren, I.
Myself, yes.
Chris, real one.
Chris, do back, I.
Donnie, current I.
We will go into closed session at seven oh three.
Yeah.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. Time is seven eleven PM, we are out of closed session, is there a motion? I'll make a motion to authorize execution with capital investment group for the developer's agreement and purchase agreement pending exhibits with review and approval by the village attorney.
Second.
First and second, Donnie Kern with the second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Bye.
Both same sign.
Caleb Garnett, most do adjourn.
Second.
Donnie Kern with the second, further discussion, all in favor?
Bye.
I. Both same sign, the meeting is adjourned at seven twelve PM.
Good night, everyone.